All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the Town of Bolton Board of Selectmen's meeting, Tuesday, February fourth, two thousand and twenty five, at six thirty at the Town Hall. It's a mix of Zoom and live meeting. Call the meeting to order. Please stand. America with the flag of the evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Third on the on the agenda was a presentation from Novus. They're all sick. So we're we're like to table that presentation until they're healthy enough and Jim can coordinate a meeting with that.
Mr. First Selectman, Deputy First Selectman, I would make a motion that we table that item.
Wait a second.
I will second that.
Thank you. Any discussions?
There's no debate.
No, that's true. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Mister President.
Of the.
You got an aye.
He voted yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, wait. One, two, three, four, five, six. Six, six members present voted yes. Next item is public comment.
Hi. Hello again.
Hi.
Jonathan London at twenty-three Colonial Road. I was here in the small group last month. I know I noticed on the agenda tonight, there's an update on Colonial Road. And I just wanted to reiterate that we're very interested in what's happening. We heard from, I heard indirectly from one of our people who was here, Lori, who got an email from Jim Rupert that said that there's been a discussion with Eversource. And there's going to be some work done if it hasn't. We saw that there was some work being done. I don't know if it's a coincidence or not in that area. But anyway, we're very interested in what progress is being made. There was a mention of some kind of a grant. I don't know if it's a state grant or whatever in that in that email. So we're interested in that. Last time Jim Rupert said that there was maybe a meeting that might be set up between Eversource and us and be interested in whatever developments there are on that. Um. So with regard to that work that was done, was that what was talked about in the email or is that something else? And, you know, so.
Well, we have that on the agenda and I'll move to bring it up. So you don't have to hang around here all day.
Oh, all right.
And all those questions will be answered for you.
All right. Well, that's good. I was gonna, I have an appointment with a couple of little kids, you know, before they go to bed. So I was gonna listen in later on. So. Yeah, and there was one other thing that was very intriguing. Somebody mentioned, and I think my two minutes will be up in a couple of seconds, about looping us in with the Vernon side, which never seems to go out. There was, it just didn't seem like, you know, it was a theoretical thing. So whatever, we're just interested. We could have had a lot more people here last time. We didn't want to make a, you know, a big show or anything like that, but it isn't just the few of us here. So thank you very much. And if you're gonna, you know, move that up on the agenda, I'd be interested. Thanks.
Well, someone would like to make a motion to move item ten A up.
Mister.
Yes, in place of, make it four A.
Deputy First Selectman, I would move that we move ten A up to and create a four A in place.
Someone second that?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. All right. So Jim has a report.
So I will tell you that communications with Eversource remain difficult. We have on multiple occasions asked for a meeting between the folks at Colonial Road that are interested and Eversource. They have not responded affirmatively to that request. What I have managed to get done is they have, they generated a project. And you may find some ribbons out there on trees. They've identified, I believe, fifteen trees that they're going to remove. Initially, it was, well, we have a project in mind and we have no approval on funding. And that went on for almost two weeks. So I reached out and I will tell you Kathy's been doing most of the communication with them on my behalf with my direction. I said, Kathy, please reach out to our Eversource liaison and tell her that I would like to know who's holding up the funding because I will get the letters from the Board of Selectmen and letters from our legislators to see if we can get the funding in place. The very next day, we got an email back that said the funding's in place for the project. So they have a project to remove approximately fifteen trees. They have the funding in place. The Eversource arborist has been in touch with the town's arborist and talked about the project, told him he was planning on doing this. Somebody from Eversource has been into the town clerk's office and identified property owners that need to grant permission. And one of those property owners is the owner of Colonial Road. Um, and we were able to find her name and her address, which is right around the corner from where you live. Um, and so they are working on getting their appropriate permissions for the project. But the only thing I haven't been able to accomplish at this point is to find out when they're going to do the project and will they meet with the town residents beforehand.
All right. Thank you. I don't know if we're supposed to interact or not.
Well, with me, I welcome a comment if you'd like.
Yeah, that's welcome news and we'll be eager to see what happens. If you're talking about Carolyn Jones, I know her.
She's the owner of Colonial Road.
Yeah. I doubt if she would object herself, but who knows? But that's all progress and thank you.
So we're hoping that this was, will go a long way to solving some of the immediate issues. It doesn't solve the other issue that who knows when they can, whatever, think about looping it. Yeah, so, but one step at a time.
Yeah, that was just a good idea.
It's a great idea.
Nice idea, but I don't, you know, I wouldn't bank on that happening.
No, no. If you can, if we can get rid of the trees, that will be a big asset for eliminating.
That's a big number of trees, not just limbs, but trees. I mean, so. Uh, well, thank you very much.
All right. And now you don't have to sit till our meeting. And if we have any updates, I'll continue to let Lori know when asked for to disseminate the information amongst the group.
Good. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Appreciate it.
All right. Now go on to item five, go on to item five, which is by the packet, is it informational form on the A R P A fundings. And Jim, if you want to go over or anyone has any question on it, pretty much list out the items and the expenditure for items.
So I will tell you, you know, the board has met a couple of times on this. And, you know, one of the things that we tried to do is to take projects that had been on the capital plan for some time and use ARPA funding to get those projects taken care of. We were very fortunate that when we went out for our second round of bidding on the demolition of the Notch Road Municipal Center, it came in significantly under budget. In fact, it was less than half of what we had gotten for prices the first time, roughly. Um, and so the projects that will be funded through the ARPA funding are the demolition and reconstruction of the Notch Road Municipal Building. And that, the reconstruction piece, just in case there's any questions, is there's an end wall there where the section that's remaining will have to be closed in from the weather and such. So that's the reconstruction piece. Um, there is the removal and infill of a manure pit at the Heritage Farm, which includes some grading up at the top of the hill near the driveway. Reclaim and repave three outdoor basketball courts at Memorial Park, Eric Park and Indian Notch Park. The purchase of a new UTV for the Bolton Volunteer Fire Department. Uh, and the nice thing about this purchase is it took two things off of our capital plan because the existing UTV for the Bolton Fire Department, when they get their new one, will be going to the Buildings and Grounds Department. So that took a request from the Buildings and Grounds Department for a UTV off the capital plan. Um, we are replacing a generator at the Bolton Center School and it covers the water system for all of the town buildings on Notch Road. And currently there is no generator that provides electricity to the freezer and refrigerator at the Center School. So we've had a couple of times where we've lost food. Um, and so this generator will be large enough to cover those other things at the Bolton Center School. And we will be replacing the generator at the Town Hall, which is at the end of its life and often goes off on low oil when it's in use for a couple of days at a time. Uh, the demolition of the greenhouse at Bolton Center School was actually a project that we authorized quite some time ago. That project, I think, is only waiting for a short piece of metal railing to be fabricated and be installed, but it is otherwise completed. And then the testing of hazardous materials and bid document preparation and project oversight for the demolition of the Notch Road facility. Total expenses for the ARPA funding are one million, four hundred forty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars, which exceeds our ARPA allocation by nine dollars.
Anyone have any questions for Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
I do. Um, I noticed that the Stanford wrecking is now over a million.
It just means I'll have to do more reporting.
That's okay. I just.
It's not a problem. It just means I'll have to do more.
Okay.
Paperwork for Jim.
And then the other question I had is, do we need to make a motion on these new amounts, given that what was voted on at the meeting had different amounts?
I don't think it would hurt.
They were estimates.
I don't think it would hurt.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Can I make a question?
I was gonna, so I'll make a motion that we approve the ARPA projects in the amounts outlined on the ARPA funding information sheet as listed.
Second.
Motion's made. Second, are there any discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And motion passes unanimously, one accent.
And who seconded?
Hamsoy.
Hamsoy.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Next item. Oh, this is the appointment of Kimberly uh, Bofana to the Conservation Commission.
Mister Deputy First Selectman, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Kimberly Bofana and to this position and also thank her for her work in the Peace Corps.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 And it passes unanimous. Correspondents, there's several here. One is from Dennis Griffin from the Highway Department. And Dennis is retiring and Dennis has been with us for, was it twenty?
Twenty-one years.
Twenty-one years. And have had the privilege of working with him several winters. But great guy, a real asset to our department and we're sorry to see him go. But he has deserved his retirement and.
Yeah, I would make a motion then, Mister Deputy First Selectman, that we accept with gratitude and best wishes for his future endeavors on the resignation of Dennis.
I'll second.
Second. Okay. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And passes unanimously.
One accent.
Pardon me?
One accent.
Oh, yeah. It's six zero, one accent. Next one is the resignation, we have the resignation of Kim Walsh.
Kathy.
As the.
This is Kathy Walsh.
Kathy.
We have a, we have a Kim Walsh, so it's understandable.
Yeah, yeah, I know. As soon as I said that, it was all. Kathy Walsh, who has served as as the Chairman of the Veterans Veterans Commission, was a step down as an alternate, but is unable to do that and wishes to submit her resignation.
Deputy First Selectman, I make a motion that with gratitude for her service as the first Chairman of the Veterans Commission, getting it off the ground and all the work that she has done for the last few memorial parades, making sure that all got done. Um, she's put together a lot of things for the Veterans Commission and seeing that the commission has been successful. So I make a motion that we accept with gratitude and best wishes to she and her family on the resignation.
Second. Thank you. Motion's made. Seconded. Any discussion? Other than I concur with everything Ham said, she's been a real positive force for that commission. All in favor of accepting her resignation, please indicate by saying aye.
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 It passes unanimously, six.
Zero. Six one? No, six zero.
Zero. I got that one right. Next is a report. If you haven't had an opportunity to read it, I suggest you do from interns in white. Interesting. Um. This is, this is one of those situations of someone, okay, you see, but you really, you really don't know what that person gets into and did. I found it personally, I found it fascinating and new and informative. And Jim, you may want to comment on it since you worked pretty closely with them.
I gotta tell you, Tim, Tim is a superstar. He's really helped our department tremendously. Um, he's been a great asset. I know that, you know, he's done some research for the board and a couple of subcommittees and they've found that helpful. So I really appreciate, you know, his service for the town.
And I suggest if anybody has an opportunity, I know it is a boring thing to do, but go online and check this out and read what this young man has done. He really is quite an accomplishment. And this goes to show that how effective this, these internships can be as an asset to, to the town and to the staff. And he's a prime example of that. If anybody has any questions or comments, if not, I'm gonna go on to the next item. Any question? No, it's, I, you gotta jump in there quick.
Sorry, sorry. I mean, I'm sure you can anticipate my question, but can I get a copy of the budget analysis spreadsheet, please?
I figured you would want that. It is, I will tell you, it's, it is like thirty-five pages.
Yeah, we're sheets.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty amazing. I will share it with anybody who wants it. I mean, we can send it out to the whole board.
There are the findings.
But it's, 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 um, it's interesting, you know, when he talks a lot, he did, he did create a summary to go with it, which I think will be helpful.
Yeah.
He taught, you know, he talks about its accuracy. Um, and it's interesting when you look at it, you know, with the town budget, which is fairly predictable, you know, the difference in change is pretty tight. But then when you get like to the capital budget, right, it can be all over the place because some years we don't spend much, other years we spend a lot. Uh, so it's, it's interesting, but I'll be, I'll be happy to share it with the entire board and the Finance Committee.
That'd be good.
Any other comments, questions? If not, I'm gonna go on to the next item with my favorite organization. Can I get Deep? And they have responded back to the letter that Jim sent on behalf of the board. I don't know if you want to comment on it.
Jim, I will say that we got a response pretty quickly, which was nice. And I did get a comment from Rod Farley today. He thought we did a great job with the letter. Um, and I did get another communication today from D E P. And so it's only today, so I didn't have an opportunity to include it in tonight's information, but they, at this point, well, it wasn't actually, I'm sorry, it wasn't from D E P. It was from Matt Galligan, Senator Rahm's office. And he is offering to help us facilitate a meeting between the town
Okay.
and D E P. And I said, yes, please, we would appreciate that.
Matt Galligan.
Matt Galligan, yes. Very, very responsive individual.
Oh, yes. You haven't met him yet.
I have, I have not met him.
Oh, yes.
No. But he's very helpful and very responsive.
Probably like a ten.
So they were looking, they're relooking at it basically?
So they basically said, look, right now, all we're doing is planning. We'll take your comments, you know, under consideration. Um. And, you know, I, I think they heard what you had to say with regard to safety and utilizing, but you know, when these projects, they sometimes take on a life of their own. Um, so I think, I think having a meeting with us and being able to put faces to names and concerns on the table, I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah, and with a little legislative backing to always help. But thank you. That's, anyone else have any comments or questions on it? If not, I'll move on to, oh, you did. I'm sorry.
Uh, I, I do, I like the fact that the fourth bullet says formalized easement and land use agreements with the budding landowners. So if, you know, we had talked about last meeting that I think that there is Town of Bolton property in that area. I'm not positive, but if there is, they will have to come.
Right. And that's why I was careful with my language because I don't exactly know where the
Yeah.
lines are that come near what they're doing, but.
Yeah.
Uh, but yes, I think, I think that's appropriate. And I think, you know, they, they did offer to share information as they generate it, which I think will be helpful.
Yeah, I was also kind of surprised that they didn't seem to focus on, on our, on Jim's safety concern about the, the access into that parking area.
It wasn't even mentioned.
Yeah, so that's got, that has to be, that has to be, um, I, I don't, I don't know if, if this person, who is it? It's Jeremy Hall. I'm not even sure he's ever been at, been at the site. But if it's Jeremy Hall that you end up meeting with, he should, you should strongly suggest a site walk and so that he can experience that hairpin turn leaving three eighty-four when you're heading westbound.
And or turning into it.
Well, I think, you know, I think.
Turning into, with traffic coming down at fifty-six miles an hour.
You had to exit and try to get out into the.
I certainly think I would try to include stakeholders, like if anybody from the board would like to participate. You know, I know that, you know, at least, at least one or two members of the Conservation Commission would like to participate in the conversation.
Yep.
So I think, I think a better meeting is not just between me and Deep. You know, community stakeholders are important here.
I found it interesting that they didn't mention anything about expanding parking per se. It just says defining available parking spaces and making them more safe, which we were concerned about the, what they proposed something like ninety spaces.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was the main, biggest concern as opposed to what just currently exists.
Right. And I mean, I mean, their bullet points seem in, kind of in line with what we wanted, which is clearer signage and moving making people go to the other lot, right? And so it seems in alignment. We'll see if it's just. Yeah, talk, but promising.
Right.
It was a quick response, which I was appreciative of.
Yeah, indeed. Yeah.
It's a quick response.
Yes, it is.
Go on to item seven E, which is interactive AI policies and government.
This is, this is just informational. I know you had attended a workshop.
No, that's tomorrow.
Oh, that's tomorrow. But I, I came across this.
You gotta go to Tempe, Arizona?
No.
I came across this article within ICMA and I just thought I would just share it in case, you know, members of the board are interested.
So I guess I, I do have a question about this. Are we at all using AI?
No.
And town staff have been instructed not to?
Not in a formal way, no. But we could certainly do that if the board decides to adopt the policy. It's day-to-day operations are my responsibility. Policies are the board's responsibility. If the board directs me to set a policy, you know, telling, you know, staff that they're not allowed to use AI. I mean, we've had the discussions with staff. We've had the discussions with Novus.
I just think it would behoove us to implement a temporary, like moratorium. Do not use it until we get a policy in place just to protect ourselves because.
Why, why wouldn't we use it? What's the safety issue?
Uh, there's, there's liability issues. There's breach issues. I mean, like, it's a little different in my field, but, you know, depending on what information goes into the tools that are used, right? Which tools are being used, what they have access to in terms of our system.
So the different firewalls that we have in place would not work as empty as.
I don't know. It depends on how stuff is.
Yeah, I mean, the first selectman has his hand up. Maybe you want to hear from him.
Rodney, can you speak?
Yeah, yeah. But that meeting we had with Novus, they were pretty adamant that we do not use it. Yeah.
Okay.
Do not use it yet? Was that your last word?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I don't, I don't think there's, I think we should certainly figure out a way to use it, but until we establish those policies and procedures, I think we should say no.
And, you know, the reason is, hey, because we don't have policies and procedures. And those policies and procedures will outline what information you can put into AI.
Correct.
Because the problem is the information you put into AI is out there in the world, right? So there are things that you may, you know, so like we would not want to use AI to help us create an emergency operations plan, right?
Right.
Because then that information is out there in the world.
Well, it depends. If you get, you can buy tools, you can, that are firewall.
They're in a box, yeah.
Right, um, but.
With that, with that said, then.
So it's, it's for informational purposes.
It probably would behoove us to move to.
We have to put it in another agenda.
Oh, we can't do it today, but we can put it on the next.
This is a regular meeting. You could add it to your.
Add it.
With the, you know, with the approval of the board.
All right. Then I would ask the Board, would you accept a, a, a motion to this item?
Yeah, I'll second, I'll second the addition of the.
My motion is made to, to add to item six E one. A motion to act on the AI policy for the Town of Bolton.
I move that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And it passes unanimously, six.
Very good.
In one action.
So now we have to make a motion on.
Now we have to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that the board implement a temporary policy which shall be a moratorium on any use of AI during work hours on any, um, Town of Bolton equipment or on the Town of Bolton Wi-Fi networks.
And I would second that. Would, if you would consider adding a timeframe that says until further notice?
Until the board can establish permanent policies.
You're acknowledging.
And now we've opened for the.
So, yeah, so I, I think what's important here, I think your motion was really good, but I think there's one piece missing. And that is, you know, you talked about on-town equipment during town hours. We, we do have laptop computers for most of our staff now. So that if we have a bad weather day, they can work from home. I think it should just be on-town equipment.
Meaning without the hours?
Right, because, you know.
Oh, oh, yeah. Sorry. I meant that to be and/or statements, but yes, that, that's.
Yes.
I'll amend, I'll amend my motion to say that there should be no use of AI on-town equipment or on the town network at any time.
I'll second, I'm.
You amend your second.
Until.
Until the board can establish permanent policies around the use of AI.
Second.
Motion's made in second now. Yes, sir. Motion is made in second now. Yes, sir.
I was just voting now.
You're voting for. I thought I was fast, I was ready for dinner. I was just waiting for a comment. Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Well done. It passes unanimously. Here going on to item eight A, this is a fun spot. Adoption of whole bunch of minutes. We'll start with the first one, which is December twenty-third. Of last year's special meeting. Someone care to move the adoption of those minutes?
I was not there till I could not make a motion.
I'll move to adoption. I'll second.
Motion, go ahead, made it. Thank you. Any comments, corrections, additions? If none, all in favor of adopting the minutes as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Move and it passes unanimously six, one option.
I'll make a motion, we'll move on. See if that's a right through that we accept the minutes of January seventh, twenty twenty-five, the regular meeting.
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded. Uh, any additions, corrections?
Yes.
When?
I have one that was requested on behalf by Rod Parley. So this.
When, where, where are you on that?
January seventh.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so he, he asked. This is under item number three correspondence. Right after where it says R. Parley, and then there's a hyphen. He would, has requested to add the phrase. On behalf of the Conservation Commission and as referenced in a letter submitted. And received December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. I think his concern was that he didn't want, he, he didn't want it to look like it would, he was individually uh opposing.
He was responding on behalf of the commission?
Yep, yes.
That seems reasonable. Yep.
So do you want me to, uh, would the clerk let me to reread that? Yes, okay. So you're after the word, after R. Parley hyphen. You would add on behalf of the Conservation Commission. And as referenced in a letter submitted and received December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments, additions or conclusions? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the minutes as modified, please indicate by saying aye.
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 And that passes six, zero, one option.
I'll make a motion, sir, for eight C, for January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, for the special eighteen meeting that we.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments, corrections or additions? Hearing none, entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Oh, vote, yeah. Move the fastest way I can do. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Then I will make a motion, sir, for January twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five, the special eighteen meeting. We approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. Again, any additions or corrections or modifications of this set of minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Other abstains?
And one abstention. Motion passes. Reports budget and tax updates. Anything new and exciting on that, Jim?
No.
That's good to hear.
Doring, and I like it more. I mean, really, things are as we expect this time of year. You know, we, you know, we continue to monitor this on a regular basis. Um, we really, we really. We're not, we don't have anything highlighted here, which is good.
That's really good. Anyone else? Anyone have any questions or comments? Let's see, wait a minute, since we've already dealt with all of them. B, go on to ten A. Nope, no, no, on ten B, rather. Consider an act upon approving budget transfers. And we do have a series of them. Mainly because of.
I don't know how many of you have to act on. This one, this first one ninety, you do have to act on because it's out of budget.
Oh, it is.
So I can't, even though it's below the amount you allow me to approve, I can't approve it out of budget.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
No, motion's made and seconded to approve the transfer of. That's one, two hundred and ninety-three dollars from seniors to public health.
Yep.
Yes.
Any comments, questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think all the other ones are just, I think. The other ones are informational purposes. And they're all, most of them look like they're, they're just transfers to, to go from just putting stuff in a, a different category because of the way we're paying to them.
All right. We did ten A, state on Colonial.
Aye.
And now ten B, discussion and possible action on Heritage Farm Trail Grant. This is an item that. The board discussed, I think, at its last meeting, but we couldn't act on it.
So we've had a couple of, I don't think I've had a conversation with the full board about this. But I've had a conversation with at least some board members. So we did, we did put our preliminary plan together and we had a meeting with the Capital Region Council of Governments. Who is acting, you know, on uh D O T's behalf as the grant administrator. Based on a number of factors, the, the. Dollar value that we initially looked for, for the project to go from here at the town hall over to the farm and then. Down along Bolton Center Road to Brandy Street and up to the high school, that dollar value is no longer um viable. Uh, we had applied for a grant for approximately one point five million dollars, which we got. Um, and the project piece to go just from uh Bolton Center Road to the high school. Based on the level of work that has to be done, they're estimating to be about two million dollars. So the choices we have were to ask for more money, which would mean that our twenty percent match goes up. Or I think, you know, my personal opinion is, uh, is that we stop the trail. At the bottom of Bolton Center Road, uh, where the second entrance into the farm is at that location. Uh, it would connect to some other areas there of the farm. And would have a connection to the street if anybody wanted to use it uh on the street. And the value of that project is just about a million dollars, which reduces the initial money that we had to put in toward. Uh, the project to begin with.
Jim, you described stopping at the bottom of Bolton Center. Could you describe the, the rest of the trail, but in just where it starts and ends, just for my purpose?
So it, it would start, it would start here, um, you know, on Bolton Center Road, you know, near the trooper, between the trooper's office and the town hall. And it would, you know, go down between the two buildings and go across the field. Um, o- over to, to the barn. Uh, and then it kind of stops there for a moment as people would traverse across the parking area. And the trail picks up again and goes down the hill, you know, sort of parallel to the driveway. And then down to Bolton Center Road along the side of the road. Um, and it would stop at this spot where the bees used to be down at the bottom.
Yeah, so the part that would be eliminated is to the high school.
From there to the high school.
Just a question, I'm not real familiar with the property, but the parking lot's kind of a difficult. Situ- is, is there any consideration of relocating the parking lot to below that um higher location? Or has that not been discussed or?
So the, the Heritage Farm Commission worked with. Uh, a couple of consultants, one of which was a landscape architect, the other one was an architect. And they have created a master plan, which includes, you know, some amenities like an improved parking area. And so what we would look to do is, so the grant won't pay for that, we, we've asked.
I think my, my comment was directed more towards planning just uh by putting this trail in, are we going to have to re, possibly. Redo the trail in that area if we ever did change the parking lot later on.
So no, the, 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 the trail has been planned with, along with the master plan.
Okay, so there's options to modify, relocate the.
So one of the, one of the, I, I've had a meeting recently with um. A gentleman named Johnny Carowen and Ellen, and her last name escapes me, but they are administrators of a grant. That the town applied for back under uh Joshua Kelly as administrator. And that grant was to use some funding for the three hundredth celebration. There's about ten thousand dollars of that grant that remains unspent. So what I'm hoping to do is to get them to allow us, is they want us to spend that money. They want us to find an appropriate way. To spend the money for the benefit of the farm. Um, because that was money set aside for this three hundredth celebration at the farm. So I am hoping that they will approve us to use those funds, uh, along with, you know, town labor. You know, and create the parking area that is in the master.
Thanks, Jim.
So what we're gonna, what we believe we're looking for is a motion to modify the original plan. So that it, it will end at the. Would be the south. Uh, east end of the farm where, where a heritage farm where it connects into the lower part of Bolton Center Road.
So move.
I'll second.
Any comments?
Uh, so, yeah, so the ending is gonna, it, it would be on the north side of Bolton Center Road. It's not gonna be.
Correct, correct, correct.
Okay, and it's, I know there's a barway there that leads into the field.
Yeah.
Is that like, is that the end?
Yeah.
Where that, where it goes in, okay, yeah.
It's a level area. Based on the conversations you and I, I, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yes. Yeah, I, I think it's not the engine, uh, Joe hasn't actually designed. That whole downhill section yet, has he?
I think he, I think he, I think that's what we'll see on Monday.
Because I know that.
Then I'll, I'll, I'll get you a copy by email.
Cause it's pretty wet between the road, and then when you look down, there's the, the stone walls that kind of parallels, there's a pretty big drop off.
There's a lot of culling, cutting and filling in there that has to be.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Any other questions, anyone?
Just to.
Uh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Excess, uh, so we've got excess money now if we're really, if we're cutting it back to one million or not?
So we would, it would, it would just, it would, they, they would keep the money.
Oh, okay, we can't, uh, we can't try to use it for something else that's related to the trail?
If you have an idea, I'll certainly float it with, with um. With grog. But it's one of the reasons I asked the question about, is there a connection over to, um, you know, the Hop River Trail?
I don't know, um, Pam, you had always mentioned interpretive signage along the boardwalk area that's gonna cross. A portion of this field right behind the town hall. I don't know if that's.
Does that qualify?
I don't know if it qualifies under the grant, um, but we certainly can, and that, you know, we, we had at, we had talked about a certain number of amenities. Signage was one of them. Uh, we talked about, you know, maybe having a bench or two in appropriate locations. Um, and they'll only pay for just so much for amenities, but they might.
I don't, could we upgrade some of the trails with boardwalks? I, I know we're only gonna do boardwalk for some of it, and that would be more. Long-lasting than what's the, that we're currently gonna do capped, whatever.
One, one of the problems with that is, it's the maintenance of it. It's initially a start, but the maintenance of boardwalks is really adds. Considerable expense. I mean, the boardwalk we have here to deal with what ones crossings and everything else, it's a significant amount. It's, it's, that's why it's, it's, it was so expensive to do this particular section.
But I was thinking upgrades too in terms of, we don't, I don't know yet what the, what the railing. If there's one or two railings, what, what that material is, you know, maybe we could look, see what Joe is proposing. For those materials, and if there's something that's maybe a little bit better, that what he's proposing.
Something long-lasting.
Right.
Yeah, definitely.
No, no, I mean, that's, that's a great idea.
Good-looking too, because the railings on a boardwalk really make a difference in the, in the aesthetics too.
Yeah, my, my recollection is, one of the recommendations was, you know, to, I mean, so. As part of the ADA component, there's certain areas that we're probably gonna have to have some railings. But I think that my recollection is that one of the requests was. We make the railings as minimal as possible so that they don't stand out.
Yeah.
On the landscape.
Right.
Uh, I think we even talked about cable there.
Right, yeah, yeah.
We talked about tailing railings. So you, you certainly have, you know, with an ADA compliant railing, you have to have a top, you have to have a handrail, you have to have a bottom, you know, kickerboard. But, you know, the, the pieces that go in between would be, you know, cable with a, you know, aircraft cable with a clear coating. So I think we had discussed that in uh vinyl composite decking. And I think it was uh co- you know, concrete um ends, you know, that would support the boardwalk.
There's different types of vinyl. Right, there's, you know.
There's different.
Full cap, yeah, some are pure wood, some are have capped on all four sides.
Pam's hand's been flying up and down here, so.
If we, whatever type we use, uh, we just remind him that these are exposed to elements.
Right.
Twenty-four seven where they are and be cognizant of the heat issue. Because we want people to be able to use them and because some of that material getting hot in the sun. Um, and the other thought is if, um, when, as he's doing his design to please. Be cognizant of the historical value of the stone walls that nothing could touch.
Yeah, nothing's gonna be touched on the stone wall. That's been made very clear on multiple occasions.
And the last piece is that, um, we're very cautious about how we put this trail in because we know that there is, um, farming being done.
And the trail, the, the trail where farm equipment is expected to cross is made so that that can happen. And the first selectman has his hand up.
What's the, what's the dollar value difference we're talking about here?
Half a million, roughly.
Oh, that's a lot. We need decisions today on that?
The, 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 the sooner the better. I mean, I don't know that we're, we're not really acting on a dollar value. We're really acting on where the trail is going to end.
Okay. Uh.
Jim was, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
Was, who was it that was talking about uh making the portion between the um trooper's office and the field? A brick walkway?
That was me.
That, okay, so.
I just thought it would, I thought it would fit the, you know.
Yeah, brick or black stone or, I mean, that, that in itself, I don't know if Jim has, uh, Joe has included that. In his cost of this, but that, that could add.
So I think we did, I just don't remember whether or not they will accept it.
Okay.
Stem concrete.
We have, we have a, a landscaping expert on our board that is not here at the moment, um, that I would like to ask you to reach out to.
Sure. That'd be a good idea.
Yeah.
So the.
But I'm, what I'm getting from the conversation is, it seems like there's general agreement to end the trail where we've discussed, but. We'd like to see what we can do with the additional monies to improve the quality of the path that we're building and the aesthetic value of it.
Great.
Right, yes.
Extending it to the middle school is not an option?
We can go on this year.
What did he say? You mean the high school, Rodney?
No, he said.
The middle school.
Oh, oh, oh.
Wasn't that gonna happen at one time down?
Well, that's, that is, that, that's supposed to be the next phase of the Community Connectivity Grant. Uh, but we, that's not funded. We haven't applied for it. But that is, that is an idea, is to get where the connectivity trail ends at the end of Knott's Road. You know, find an appropriate way to get to um the school and, you know. The town amenities down on Knott's Road. That, that is, you know, part of the ultimate game plan. I'm not, I'm not sure that there's an ability to. Um, do that here, but I'm, I'm willing to ask the question.
Just throwing it out there.
Well, and that's gonna require a lot of outreach to residents, because that's talking about.
It, it, and it sets us back with, you know, the current plan. Right, because then we're taking a new section all the way to the drawing board.
Right.
You can't implement in phases.
And we'd have to, we could potentially implement it in phases, but, you know, then we'd have to have. And we'd have to, we could potentially implement it in phases, but you know, then we'd have to have additional public informational meetings about that portion. It was, I'm I'm not opposed to it, but um.
Well, that was actually, my next question is now that we're voting on this amended plan, we have to bring it to the public, right?
Well, we we are planning to have another public informational meeting in the spring anyway.
Yeah, this is a, this is an action by the board, and all all the meetings prior to that were informational meetings for input, so. Uh I think, I think that would be quite frankly, uh quite well, my, I I think it should. Where where we're talking about ending, I think it's a proper place to end it. Enhancing it as best we can is also, I I think a good move of the a- of the assets we have. Should we not be able to spend? I hate to say this, uh the million five, maybe the million one, the the plus side of that is, you know. Our contribution drops, but it gives us some extra dollars for a different project, so if we don't need it. I don't know why we should spend it.
Right.
It's just.
Before we take action on this, can I just ask one quick question, have we kind, have we run this by the farm commission, they're well aware of what this action is we're talking about tonight? And if it is not, has not been, I would ask if we postpone the vote on this until we've contacted them.
The the trail design is the same one that's been on, the the concept hasn't changed. It hasn't changed, the only difference is that it stops at the bottom.
Thank you, then I would withdraw my.
I I don't need to.
There there is a meeting planned with uh. Ar- Arlene and Jill Dillon and myself, Gwen was going to attend, but she has another engagement that is very important. Um, so we will be meeting on the tenth to go over this with uh Arlene and get her feedback.
So any modifications you have on there, doesn't, it 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 does not interfere with the motion, the motion is to li- to to limit it. At at the, at the very end of of the farm, on where it ties back into Bolton Road. That doesn't, so you can modify anything you want in there, if this this motion doesn't change that.
Thank you.
Is broad enough to to cover a lot, and even things like, you know, what Gwen brought up about advancement and and all that. So with that said, any more comments on the motion before us, yes, sir?
Just, just one, I uh, I think these are all good ideas, and I am certainly in favor for considering anything. That would improve the durability and lessen the maintenance longer. It'll look better right off the bat, it'll cause less headaches down the line, so, very good thinking.
With that said, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, six zero with one option. And going on to. I'm going, no, we did all that, new business, we're going to new stuff, holy cow, all right, considering that, this is a good one. On a pro proclamation for Dennis and.
I make a motion that we sign the proclamation that is presented to us, could be presented at a future date to Mr. Griffin.
Second that motion.
Motion made and seconded, it I, I'd like to read it into the minutes if, with the board's permission.
We, Mr. Mr. Do you wanna wait until we present it to him?
He's gonna come before us to do a presentation, if he's willing.
Okay, then we, we can hold it off to that point then, okay.
But we need to sign it, right?
Yes, that's the official pen, this one, this is the official pen, that way everybody's signing in the same ink.
Yeah, we need, uh, no, you have to vote.
I second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously, thank you very much.
Just save that pen with the thing, so I use the same one too.
Okay.
It's out of ink.
And next item is, which is B, and consider an act on, uh consider a possible act on Memorial Day Parade, Pam, you wanna?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Moore, I asked that we put this on the, on the new business, uh as you know, every year, the. Bolton has been honored to have a Memorial Day Parade that has been. Hosted for many years by Mr. Price and then has. Price's family members have hosted uh and managed um to put it all together, Mr. Moore has organized it in other years. And for the last few years, the uh Veterans Commission took it over, uh and Mrs. Walsh, not only did she. Organize it, she created a book on how to. Yes, and uh very kindly, so that there is the tradition of what we do and that in that parade. And the ceremony that follows on the green, at this time, we know, um and you've seen tonight that she has. Um resigned for um medical issues and um. So we are in need of someone to coordinate Memorial Day Parade. Now, having said that, I have someone possibly in mind, but I don't have a guarantee to to yes. So if anybody else would like to organize it.
There's still a veterans' commission.
At this point, the veterans' commission, there have been quite a few resignations, we'll discuss that shortly.
Yeah, uh, the age is getting it.
Got it.
Um and we're down to just two members who are uh uh. Going to do it, uh so um, we, if you have an idea, would you please come to suggest it? We'll go along with that, we have, we'll talk about it next month.
I have a little thought we might consider, if we can have a volunteer to edit. And to, and also to be able to coordinate it with our um recreational person. Um, I don't, what, I don't know, what's what's the position?
It's recreation director.
Recreation director, just, just so you have. A level consistency where stuff can be kept here in case something happens to whoever's doing it. It it, you don't have to start from ground zero, that's why I say, so it would be great if if um. Your Pam can can.
And if there's a staff person to help.
Yeah, exactly.
An honor student or a captain project or something to do it under the supervision of.
We know that our ref- director, recreation director and other staff in the first, in the selectmen's office are stretched. In that measurably right now, and so that's why.
Yeah, but with a playbook, it might be a good project for a student, I mean, let let's not discount how. Resourceful our our high school students can be, they've done some good stuff.
So, that's just a thought, and when we put this thing together, so if we can, it it would be great to be able to get. An outside source and then working corrupt on a cooperative basis, it just, I think will make things easier for. Everybody, both sides of this thing, so that, and we we, sticking it to another, another job to a staff person here, I think that's just. My thought would be too much, and um, and.
They're quite burdened at the moment.
Well, it is, not only that, but. This whole, one of the things about this program, it was started on a volunteer basis, has run all these years on a volunteer basis. I hate to lose that aspect of it, but it's good to have the assistance of that support, of of that support, that's that's it, that's my two cents. Okay, going on, unless someone else has another comment, I'm gonna go on to see which board commissioners vacancy listings to go on, to go out with the July.
That was my recommendation, sir. Uh, we have quite a few vacancies coming up or uh need to be filled presently. Uh, for example, we have sadly lost the chairman of the Ethics Commission. Uh and that Ethics Commission is required by state law. Uh but then there are many other positions such as those on the Veterans Commission and some others that need to be filled. What we find is we do it by word of mouth and we start asking around, if anybody wants to, we put it out on the town bulletin. It shows up uh at different times on the website, but that's not always on people's first radar. So one of the things I thought of, if people knew and they get their tax bills. What the, if those are getting tax bills, uh that there are these vacancies, uh would you like to serve your town? Do it in a real positive manner, uh put together a short piece of paper. There are these commissions that are looking for members, would you like to get back to your town, you know, blah, 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 and see if um people would step forward?
One, one third sheet added to the tax bill is a cost of about two hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's gonna ask.
That's cheap enough. Thank you.
And item T, discussion and formation of the ad hoc committee for finalization of the Eric Park plan. We briefly discussed it at our last meeting and had some good thoughts, and the thoughts are, well, good to have people who actually have. A skin in the game, who, um you know, that may be going in there, how how to best utilize this field? So, and and our our first selectman suggested that this is. We should have a a uh ad hoc committee to do that, just to go over the the set of plans, and we go forward of it. It's a set of plans that meets our ne- our our needs of today, not our needs of five or ten years ago. So I'm looking for a volunteer, thank you.
Yeah, volunteer.
Thank you.
Sure.
You were the first one that came to mind after our discussion.
Into it, if we're talking about the future, it'll just be a roll of PS fives, the kids can just speak.
Can you recommend any, can you recommend anybody else, maybe somebody from?
Anybody from town?
Yeah, someone outside, outside of us.
Can I come back to you or?
Yeah.
Email, think about it?
Yes.
Yeah, for sure, we'll we'll come up with some folks. I'll force them.
An odd number is great, cause it's easier to make decisions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, always that way.
Do you wanna set a date?
Presumably, it would need to be. Uh, multi partisan, correct, it would have to meet the bipartisan, well. You can have tenants, you're gonna have to meet the rules, right?
I think that's accurate, yep.
Can you give me a clear direction as to what you'd like me to do, the email, are we setting a date?
So if you, if you, if you can find a list of interested individuals. And Amanda brings up a point that we need to consider, is it, you know, it should be bipartisan or unaffiliated. And you have, if you could bring a recommendation to a near future meeting, the the board will have to act on. On forming a committee.
And we've got enough meetings coming down the pike.
Yeah, I'm not worried about it dragging on, because we have so many meetings scheduled, but we should be able to get it done quickly. But we'd like to really get to work on this and get the plans finalized and get the project out to bed.
Okay.
Thank you.
What timeframe are you thinking for the meeting?
Say again?
Uh the timeframe for the meeting, in another month?
Actually.
I'm hoping sooner than.
Yeah, hopefully, we can meet, yeah, because we would all, uh, Mr. Chairman, with all the meetings we've got coming down the pike. And and.
Rodney, make, makes a good, what, a good point, if we're going to move this up, uh then we need to put it on the special meeting to create the committee.
Right.
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as we get a list of names.
Once we get the list.
Yeah.
We can. We'll add it to an agenda.
We'll work on it this week.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, good.
Awesome. And here's the one that's coming up, it's quite the thing are. Am I, in centennial, yes, you got it right, uh, our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, wow. So.
Yeah, so what of, that's of the country.
Correct, right.
As you asked.
So.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we're not going backwards, we're not regressing.
Right.
So I I, again, this is, this is something, we don't, we don't have to act on this today, this is something. This is something for thought, you know, I know Arlene and I have already had a couple of discussions about this, I think. She's willing to be on the committee, and I think that's appropriate, uh I don't think she wants to chair the committee. Uh and I know that she's reached out to the regiment that did the encampment here the last time. Um, I was included on that email, I don't know that we've gotten a response, I haven't seen one. I think she's gonna reach out again, but I think she would certainly be an individual that I would consider. If I were putting the committee together, she's certainly somebody that I would consider putting down there, but.
Do you wanna add that to the uh the tax bill, little sheet of the tax bill, saying that there's a. But, I mean, you're trying to, trying to fill these positions.
This one's.
Yeah, this one's gonna be done quicker.
Other towns that have already formed their committee.
Yeah.
Um, and you, you know, cause it's, what's.
You wanna be operating.
What you're being encouraged to do is, as a town, to generate a committee and put on a series of events throughout the course of that year. That celebrate our, our country's anniversary. I've got a little information from the state, the state has a committee. I've gotten a little information, not, not a lot, but a little. And they, you know, they're, they're asking us to put a committee together and let them know who the committee is so that they can communicate with the committee.
Yeah, just more on funded requests, it's fine.
Yes.
I'm not sharing up, um.
Please get back to the historical society, please.
Yeah, I was thinking about John as well, yeah.
Anyone else have any questions, comment on that one, if not, I'm gonna move on to number twelve, the town administrator's report.
I realized after I wrote this, the only thing I forgot to put in there was the update about. The Colonial Road, but we discussed that under another matter, um, anybody have any questions about the report tonight?
What's the pool grant?
The pool grant is a grant that you guys approved us to apply for, and that was for some emergency management upgrades. And so if you, if if you look, you're not tripping on wires anymore that go across the floor, that piece of what's been done. Um, we had a television that was non-functional, which we used during emergencies to watch weather, weather reports and things of that nature. The television has been replaced, there are another number of other items that are in the works. And I don't know what the acronym stands for.
No, I I mean, when you said the emergency, I knew what it meant after that, but pool meant nothing to me.
Yeah, yeah, those things are.
There are some staff that would, you know, and townsfolk that would really appreciate a pool. It was only, it was only fifteen thousand dollars, so we're not gonna get much of a pool, fifteen thousand.
Lastly, on that item, did you give a brief update on the?
Yes, the uh, so I I put a little bit of information about the 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 uh. Work that's going on at Knott's Road Municipal Center, so um, if if you've gone by there, and I know Amanda does daily. Um, there, you've seen a couple of dumpsters there, there's one in the front that's covered with plastic. That dumpster is being used for asbestos materials that are being abated from the building. The dumpster is on the end of the building where uh the church was most recently. Um, that is for trash that they're removing from the, not, not garbage, but. Things that are not hazardous materials that they're removing from the building, because some of those things. Are on top of hazardous materials that they have to abate, um, and so they have. Com- completed rooms A and B and the hallway in between rooms A and B. Uh at last, I knew they were working on the abatement of the vestibule. And the stairwell, um, in that section, and they're preparing to move into the other section of the building. We do have a gas line that has to be moved, that is in the back of the building. That is set to happen on February eleventh. Um, right now, our only hiccup, and we're trying to work through that, is. Frontier, um when they were there and moved the line for the registration of voters. We asked them to remove the old line, which they neglected to do, so there's still one phone line that's dead. That's connected to the building. But part of the the uh statutory requirement for the demolition is to have all utilities removed from the building. And have a letter from the utility provider stating that that's happened. And, you know, Frontier moves very, very slowly, so we are trying to escalate to an area supervisor. Because they were asked to do it when they were there and just forgot. And we, you know, we're struggling to get them to do it in a timely fashion. Um, today, our staff actually dug up and uh severed. Um, today, our staff actually dug up and uh, severed the septic connection to the old portion of the building, so that's been severed and capped. Um, so we're, you know, water's already been disconnected, so we're really in very good shape. Things are going. I did reach out to uh, Ty and Bond, uh, our consultant, who's watching over things for us. Uh, and asked them if they felt things were going appropriately and on schedule. And the response has been affirmative, uh, both from them and from Stanford wrecking.
Hear me?
Comment? I do. Uh, I did talk um, to Rodney for just a moment about this, and I would sort of like to make a big deal about having the first giant jaws come and take the first bite out of the building, whatever excavator project or breaking ball or something you're going to do. This is a building that has a lot of town people who went to the school. And they might wanna come and see, but we've had a lot of complaints about uh, um, that it's time for it to come down. I think Jim Lorsch would like to be there. Uh, as uh, one of our stalwarts, uh, advocates for doing something better and new. Uh, so when the time comes, I'd like to have it advertised and maybe just do a, not a full day's work, but a short uh, maybe dramatic, uh, walk come down or something.
I had the same, a similar thought, but a bit more aggressive one. My thought was since I had to deal with this thing for thirty some odd years, is the board of selectmen each be able, if you can make that day, my thoughts. I ran a bite Rodney, so he, and his voice was gone, so he couldn't respond back. Right, we could all have a sludge hammer and be there and get that group photo and everybody gets that first whack at the building. So, and then you, well.
I don't think we could.
You do have to wear a hazmat.
You know, we're on the outside, you're gonna have to wear a hard hat.
Both, both of those things are already in the works. I wasn't, I wasn't gonna share, but those are those things generally.
Thanks, Jim.
Can we move on to the item thirteen?
Yes.
No, no, no.
One more, yes.
Yeah, but um, Jim, you mentioned after the last meeting, should we save the sign? So have you given any more thought to that?
I I, I mean, it's, you know, I I haven't given a lot of thought to it, but I I don't think it's a bad thing. You know, if we could find an appropriate placement for it.
Yeah.
You know, it could just be stored outside somewhere.
Oh, yeah, definitely won't deter.
Made into a bench or something.
That was my thinking, is it could just be a bench on the property somewhere.
Yes, and what was my other question? Shoot.
Well, I'll ask mine while you think. Um, it says we are communicating with Tyler regarding training, so that means you've reached.
We've, we've actually talked to some.
Okay.
And so we actually have, we have a quote for them to come in and train a half a dozen people of around fifteen hundred dollars.
Train them on what?
The use of the system. If you gave me access to the system today, I wouldn't know what to do with it.
Okay. But like, it's current functionality or expanded functionality?
It's current functionality. We're not taking advantage of what is current.
Oh, okay, so it's not, okay, that's, yes, like, work, approval work. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I remembered what my other comment was, was is it possible to do just really short little paragraphs of, um, documenting the work that's being done, the demolition work in the, in the bulletin that comes out? Well, I don't know if that.
I think that's a great idea. I wish I had thought of it.
Okay. You can take credit for it.
No. Instead of public reading, it was your idea, but I wish I had thought of it. It's a great idea.
And with that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, I'll second.
Motion made, second, all in favor? I, I, I pass as unanimously as agreed.
This is for selection, before the meeting started, Gwen wished you.